All right, good evening. Let's call the City of Milton Virtual Common Council Meeting to order on Tuesday, February 15th, 2022 at 6:00 PM. And can I get confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
Meeting notice was posted on Friday, February 11th, at Hometown East Hardware, Milton Pigly Wiggly, and Milton City Hall.
Thank you. And is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? All right, we have an agenda. Pledge of Allegiance behind Inga's shoulder. I pledge allegiance into the flag of the United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And are there any public comments regarding items which can be affected by council agenda? Is there anybody in our waiting room, or is there anybody on the call that would like to have any comments regarding the agenda?
There's no one in the waiting room. There's no one in the waiting room. We did just have a couple other people jump on, so not sure if anyone would like to speak during public comments.
Okay, I don't see any hands raised or anybody unmuting themselves, so if there is something that comes up on the agenda further down that you would like to participate in, please let us know. All right, mayoral proclamation for Black History Month. Whereas during Black History Month, we celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by African Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development. And whereas Black History Month grew out of the establishment in 1926 of Negro History Week by Carter G. Woodson and the Association for the Study of African American Life and History. And whereas the theme of Black History Month for 2022 is Black Health and Wellness, which explores the legacy of not only black scholars and medical practitioners in Western medicine, but also other ways of knowing, e.g. birth workers, doulas, midwives, naturopaths, herbalists, throughout the African diaspora. The 2022 theme considers activities, rituals, and initiatives that black communities have done to be well. And whereas Amanda Johnson Lee, a self-emancipated slave, worked in a Union Army encampment in Corinth, Mississippi as a cook and seamstress for the soldiers until a doctor from Edgerton, Wisconsin, volunteered to conduct her with him to Wisconsin, and she lived in Milton with her second husband, AB Lee. Whereas the observance of Black History Month calls our attention to the continued need to battle racism and build a society that lives up to its democratic ideals. And whereas the story of Milton, since its foundation, has included progressive abolitionist views and actions that led to the Milton House, a former stagecoach inn built in 1844 by Milton's founder, being named a national historic landmark, recognized on the National Network to Freedom, and documented as the only authenticated Underground Railroad site. In Wisconsin, people are able to tour. And whereas the mayor and common council continues to work toward becoming an inclusive community in which all citizens, past, present, and future, are respected and recognized for their contributions and potential contributions to our community, the state, the country, and the world. And whereas the city of Milton is proud to honor the history and contributions of African Americans in our community throughout our state and nation. Therefore, I, Anissa Amalte, Mayor of the City of Milton, County of Rock, State of Wisconsin, do hereby proclaim February as Black History Month in the City of Milton, and encourage the celebration of this month to provide an opportunity for all residents in the city to learn more about the past and to better understand the experiences that have shaped our community and nation.
Very nice.
Thank you. Approval of the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Mary, is there a second?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anybody opposed? That motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding unamended offer to purchase 31.229 acres of land along Putman Parkway.
Sorry, I was muted. So as you may recall, in October of last year, Signature Warehousing presented an offer to purchase 16 acres of land along Putman Parkway in the city of Milton for the development of their intermodal kind of cross-stock distribution and warehousing facility. Since that time, the folks at Signature Warehousing have further refined their development plans and are actually looking to potentially construct a larger facility in the city of Milton. Originally, they were looking at roughly 16 acres, and they have provided an amended offer now for 31.229 acres. So it's about double where they were at, which is great news for both Signature Warehousing and the city of Milton. Because this is a larger offer to purchase, this would require Plan Commission and council's review and approval. The Plan Commission reviewed this amended offer to purchase earlier today and passed it on to the council with a favorable recommendation unanimously. Also included in the packet tonight is a draft site plan of how they would like to utilize that site. This is not a final site plan, and when that site plan is finalized, that will go before the Plan Commission as well for review. The next step in the process, if this amended offer to purchase is approved, is we will begin working on a TIF development agreement with the folks at Signature Warehousing. And that also will come before the common council. I see Darren and Joel are both present this evening, and they represent Signature Warehousing, and I've worked with both of them through this process. So if you have any questions about kind of their plans, they're certainly available for comment. But we are excited to see the project grow before it even begins in Milton, and I'm sure they are as well. So, you know, we'd like to continue moving forward. One question that came up at the Plan Commission level was about the rail spur. And yes, Signature Warehousing would like to access the rail line that is being constructed, just south of Putman Parkway. I know that they engaged the railroad last fall, so they have been in discussions with them, so that process will be moving along as well concurrently with this. But if there are any other questions for myself or the folks from Signature Warehousing, we're certainly here to entertain those questions and hopefully see this project continue to move forward.
Is there any questions or comments? No.
Who did you ask?
You.
Oh, okay. No, just welcome. Glad to have the opportunity to work together. Thank you very much.
Ryan, any questions or comments?
We'll see, a nice project.
Larry?
No comments other than welcome to Milton and thank you for bringing up another great opportunity to our community.
Devin?
No comments or questions. Thank you.
Bill?
Nothing to add. Thank you.
Okay, Linda, you're muted.
Linda, it's star six to unmute?
Okay, no, thank you. I don't have any questions. Thank you for your interest in Milton, and we look forward to working with you.
All right, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve. How do you, actually, how do you want, do we need to do individuals?
I think it would be a motion to approve the amended offer to purchase with Signature Warehousing.
Okay, I'll make that motion to approve the amended offer to, or Signature Warehouse.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second. Anything else for anyone? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you, Darren. Thank you, Joel. We'll be in touch.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, discussion and possible action regarding 2022 farmland leases.
Jenny, did you want to take this one? It's up to you.
I can, and then you can add information about the new lease that we'll have.
Oh, sure. Yep.
Okay, so the 2022 farmland leases were included in the agenda. These are the lands that the city owns, and, but there's not any specific designated development plans at this time, but they are for future developments. The leases are included for productive crop uses. There is one new lease, and that is based off in 2021, the city of Milton purchased 56 acres of land from the Bellardi Family Trust along Putman Parkway. Brian and Jill Gunnick had an existing farmland lease with the Bellardi Family Trust at the time of the purchase, and the city honored that lease and continued that lease. And then now we are presenting them with a new lease. All of the other existing leases are the same amounts from the previous year. Did you have anything to add to that new lease?
No, I do not. The lease is for the land that, as Jenny noted, for the land that we purchased from Brian Bellardi. And ironically enough, that is the land that the folks that we just spoke about will be purchasing. So depending on their timeline, Mr. Gunnick may not be able to farm the entirety of that site, but we want to make sure that our timelines jive between the three entities. So Mr. Gunnick and I will discuss that once I have a firm timeline from Signature Warehousing as to what portion of that property will remain as usable farmland.
Okay, any questions or comments on farm leases?
How many motions do you want, or do you want this all one motion?
I think one motion would be sufficient, something to the effect of make a motion to approve the farmland leases for 2022 as presented in the common council packet.
Is someone going to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Go ahead, Linda.
No, I'll second, because I can't see what you guys are doing.
So like, I don't know, did somebody make the motion, or did just Linda make the motion?
I'll move to recommend approval of the attached 2022 farmland leases as presented in the packet.
I'll say.
Okay, there's a motion. And there's a second by Ryan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? All right, that passed. Discussion and possible action regarding 2022-06 Resolution requesting American Rescue Plan funding from the county of Rock to support fire and EMS protection across North Central and Northeastern Rock County.
So hopefully folks were able to see the email that I sent out prior to the meeting with the draft resolution that was attached. That resolution was drafted by Attorney Alrich from Allen and Mallett. Yeah, there we go.
No, mute yourself. Linda? Linda, I'm trying to mute you, but I think you keep unmuting. Okay.
I just want to make sure everybody answers, help staff and fasten and...
Yeah, at least you know what Van Gelder's protocol is. No, that's good. Sorry, there has been continual discussions between not only the five municipalities that are looking to join the Edgerton Fire Protection District, but also the five entities that currently are a part of the Edgerton Fire Protection District in regards to the county's ARPA funding. There are a couple of members of the county board that have engaged in these conversations, and the group thought it would be a positive step to provide a resolution to the county board at some point in the future. The date that that resolution will be presented to the county board has yet to be determined. As each municipal entity is looking to pass this resolution, I believe we are the first of the group, as far as I know, to consider the resolution. But in short, the resolution would be asking the Rock County to allocate some of their ARPA funding to help in the assist in this transitional process of creating a much larger fire protection district within Rock County. The resolution as drafted, as noted, is a request for $5 million of ARPA funding to help with the capital aspects of this transition. Certainly understand that that is a large sum of money, but looking forward to the conversation with the Rock County Board of Supervisors as to see their appetite and willingness to potentially allocate some of those funds to our endeavor. Because this is nearly a county, it probably encompasses about half of the county, if not more, geographically, we certainly feel that there is a strong case to be made here in terms of seeing these funds go towards such an important aspect of public protection, public safety, and public service provisions. So the resolution would, like I said, would be going before the individual municipality boards, ours being first, and then hoping that that will be presented at some point in the near future to the county board. The resolution that is attached, or that I sent out earlier today, was a draft version. Attorney Ulrich indicated that he was hoping to have a finalized version in time for our meeting. I have not heard from him, so perhaps this is the final version. But as noted in the email, for some reason, if there are substantive changes to the resolution, we can bring that back to a future meeting for reconsideration. Attorney Schrader, do you have any concerns with that approach? I know we weren't able to discuss that today, but...
Well, that's fine. In fact, it's similar to what we just did with the amended offer to purchase. So that's fine. You can approve it as is, and if it's substantially modified, as Al indicated, then it can come back and you can you can vote to approve the amended one.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I'm just gonna see if the bill has any questions or comments about the resolution. Now, I mean, I know, okay, so like you have two rolls. I understand that, not that you're, I'm asking you to tell us how you're going to vote either way or pre-decide a vote, but just wondering, maybe you can talk about the ARPA funds.
Sure. Interestingly enough, I just got out of a broadband committee meeting, a county broadband committee meeting, and it's likely that there'll be probably around a $6 million ask on broadband. Let me give you a kind of the framework of where we are at the last county board meeting. Josh Smith kind of ran through what had been allocated up to date. So going through resolutions that have been passed that commit ARPA money. County has about $71 million in ARPA funds. Those monies need to be committed by 2024. They have through 2026 for the funds to be expended. As of the county board meeting last Thursday, approximately $57 million of the $71 million had already been voted on. So about $14 million left as of last Thursday. I think that you're right, that, you know, a coalition could be put together. I think that this is, you know, a sensible kind of an approach. But I would kind of urge that if this action is going to be taken, that all do haste. Be followed, because there are other people with resolutions out there waiting, and $14 million of $71 million is not a lot left. So I would certainly sign on to this resolution. I think it's a great idea. And we'll, you know, do what I can to encourage others to support it as well. While it's true that geographically it covers a really big portion of the county, it probably doesn't cover as big a portion in terms of the number of votes. You know, it doesn't cover the city of Janesville, doesn't cover the city of Beloit, and consequently, there may be supervisors representing those areas that may not be in support of it. So I think there's a little bit of work to do, but I think we should go forward with it.
Thanks, Bill. Teresa?
No, I think we should go ahead with it, but no other comments. Thank you, Bill, for the explanation.
Larry?
I say move forward. We'll see what transpires.
I'm on board.
Ryan?
So it's a shot to try for it.
Linda?
I think it's a great idea. My question is, do the township, do they have the ability to put in for their fire service also? The individual township, like Harmony or...
Well, they all have, they all have, they all have ARPA allocations, just like we do. Is that your question?
Yeah, well, I was, but I was questioning more about what the county is going, what with this resolution, we're going to be asking for money from the county.
Correct.
So are these other entities also, do they have the ability, does Harmony, can they say we need to have this much from the county also, or is that...
No, this would be a joint resolution. All municipalities involved would be requesting funds from the county. This wouldn't be just a singular resolution from the city of Milton.
Great. Did you want a motion?
Sure.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the 2022-06 Resolution requesting American Rescue Fund from the county of Rock to support fire and EMS protection across North Central and Northeastern Rock County.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Thanks. Discussion and possible action related to a scope of work and letter of agreement with Miller Communications.
So as you may recall, we chose Miller Communications as our preferred consultant to assist us with the pending referendum, communications with the pending referendum. We've had several discussions with Miller Communications over the last couple of months. They have provided a letter of agreement for their work to be provided. This is nearly identical to what was in their RFP response, but, you know, obviously provides more pertinent information to the scope of work in this project and setting. As you can see, the the letter of agreement is not to exceed $41,000, which is what was in their proposal. So we would like to move forward with that scope of work and letter of agreement to formalize our relationship with Miller, even though we've had many, many conversations with them. They've been great about answering questions from us and doing work with us in advance of having this agreed upon. So certainly appreciate all of their efforts and everything they've done up to this point. They seem to be a very active and engaged group.
Okay, Ryan, any questions or comments?
No questions or comments.
Teresa?
Yes, I was wondering, when we spoke about it, we had an interest involving the township. Where are you at with that?
My understanding, and Anissa can certainly jump in, that Chairman Meyer from the town of Milton has indicated he would like to work with Miller Communications as well and plans to, planned to, or plans to have an item on a town board agenda to seek permission to engage Miller Communications. In our discussion with Miller last week, Anissa, they said that they had not heard from the town of Milton yet.
Oh.
But that has certainly been their overtures outwardly, is that they would like to join, or that they would like to engage Miller as well. So I don't see any reason why they wouldn't at this point.
And we did inform Miller of that on two occasions, that that was the information that we had.
Yes, I had thought that they were going ahead with it and had already held their meeting, but perhaps it did not get on their agenda in time.
Maybe not. I can certainly reach out to Brian and just follow up.
All right, sounds good.
Good question. Larry?
Nothing. Thank you. Sounds great. Let's move forward.
Bill?
No question.
Devin?
I don't have anything additional to add.
Linda?
No questions. Sounds great.
Is there a motion? Oh, Attorney Schrader has a question or a comment.
Just a comment, just so that the city has all of the relevant information and reviewing the documentation. One thing I did not see, even though it's referenced in one of the documents, is the standard hourly rates that they'll be charging up to the $41,000. Al, have they ever since provided that to you?
Yes, it should be on the attachment.
The letter?
Yeah. It's sent us a second. I'm clicking on the links right now.
I think it's on I think it's on the scope of work. Bottom of the scope of work.
Standard expense reimbursement policy. Yeah. I know what you're talking about, though, Mark. We had talked about that.
Yeah, if they have, I don't have it. So that's why I was just wanting to make sure that they reference it. But they hadn't provided it, so that's why, just want to make sure that they do that, so that we have it and you have a better idea than...
Yeah, it says, "A copy of Miller Communications' standard expense reimbursement policy has been enclosed for your review," and that is page three of the LOA. You're correct, in the original version, that was not included.
Okay, so if you have that now, that was my only comment.
Is there a motion?
Are you, can I just ask a question? Are you referring, are you referring to the standard expense reimbursement policy there?
Yep.
That Mark is satisfied with? Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mark, you shook your head no.
Was that not?
No, it wasn't the expense reimbursement. It was, they had, in terms of their scope of work, they were enclosing what their standard rates were, and apparently they've done that now, so that's fine.
Okay, great.
Okay, is there a motion? Larry?
I'll take a stab at it. Please help me if I need help. I move to approve the letter of understanding. A letter of, sorry. Yeah, a letter of understanding with, say that again, Al.
Letter of agreement.
Thank you. Letter of agreement, yes, with Mueller Communications, as presented in the documentation.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? All right, great. General items. Okay, committee reports. Anybody want to go first?
Plan Commission met earlier this evening and approved the offer to purchase, which we discussed up there, one of the previous items. It's the only one I have at this point. And I don't want to steal Teresa's thunder, but Fire Commission tomorrow is canceled, so...
But please still, Teresa's thunder. Storybook Gardens, actually, will you include that on your library update?
I can talk about now. We approved a modification to the metal archway that's going to be at the entrance of the gardens. So that's going to look really nice, and the artist is actually working on it. He sent a picture of some branches he was working on today, so that's very exciting. We talked about the... We talked about the outdoor programming space or the gazebo. We're hoping to get going on ordering the materials for that and hopefully get that started once the ground thaws. And then we talked about different fundraising ideas and opportunities for Story Gardens going forward.
All right.
And just a reminder, mugs are available for sale at the library. So stop by and get a coffee mug for an upcoming birthday or Mother's Day or whatever kind of holiday you're celebrating.
And we're also going to be expanding the wild or another section of wildflowers along the back this spring, hopefully, so.
Any other committee reports? Okay.
Um, just, just quick, Parks and Rec is meeting next week on Monday. So it's kind of a weird month with the first of the month on a Tuesday, so Parks and Rec is next week.
Gotcha. Okay. Any other staff reports? Who wants to go first? Jenny? Is there anything going on in your world?
Oh, not too much. Um, so we'll start with border review. This afternoon, we set it for May eleventh at five P M. So I'll be in the council chambers. And we do have one opening at this point for a reappointment if anyone's interested or knows of anyone. And then there was a primary in Beloit and Edison today, and we, one of our new election officials who is interested in seeing how the election was run in a similar sized community actually went to Edison and was trained and was able to see quite a bit of information over there. So that was kind of exciting. And then, yes, we have a few things going on with elections in the near future. And then also there is some questions that came about one of our open records requests. And so I've been, but working on that of recreating that open records request. So that is all that I have right now.
You, Jenny? Inga, anything else?
Um, just quick, we are in the final stages of a recruitment for a part time admin assistant position for City Hall. If everything goes according to plan, I'd expect that person to be starting within probably the next two weeks. So we'll keep you posted as that continues and ends.
Thank you. Ashley?
Um, so next Tuesday, we are collaborating with the Milton House Museum on a presentation celebrating past and present black creative expression from music to storytelling to illustrating children's books. So that starts at five thirty and is going to be virtual. So if you can register by heading to our website or giving us a call. Jamie received a thousand dollar grant from the Center of South Asian Studies at UW Madison to purchase South Asian materials for all ages. So the books have started to arrive and they'll be into our collection soon. And then we recently launched Canopy, which is a video streaming service where you can watch movies and documentaries and educational videos and kid shows all free with your Mountain Public Library card. It's very similar to Netflix and each cardholder gets six play credits a month. So there is a huge library of newer and older videos. So just another awesome free service from your local library.
So how does that, how does that work? Do you get a, like, connect to, there's like a library of things you can watch? Is there a link or do you download or?
Well, it is an app. It's an app you can download onto your phone, onto your tablet, to your smart TV. Just, just very, very similar to Netflix. So you can watch it on the go anywhere. And you can access it through the web browser as well.
Exciting.
Yeah.
So, um, so maybe we'll have you do like some feature recommendations or something at some point.
I can.
Or, or as a team building experiment, like we could all watch something on the site and then do a review. You know, something exciting like that. Okay, who else? Kelsey?
First installment of property taxes at the county are complete. We collected eighty two percent of our real estate, ninety eight percent of personal property, and ninety two percent of our special assessments that were charged. So that's done now, and then just working through getting ready for the audit, which will be March seventh through the ninth.
That's always an exciting time, isn't it, the audit?
Super exciting.
Well, you know, you're the nervous person. I probably is. I should not be making smart alecky remarks about that. Thank you. Kelsey, chief?
I was downloading the canopy app, sorry. Get right on that one.
That is so awesome.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm a full user of all of the other free things that Ashley gives. That's awesome. I don't have any updates. Things are going fine. Our new recruits are still working hard. So I don't have anything else to share.
Okay, so the weatherman Mark Langer?
Um, yes, I don't have a lot either, which is pretty good for this time of year. Some water main breaks, which are not fun, most fun, but they happen. Weatherwise, very important. There's some snow in the forecast for Wednesday, Thursday, Wednesday night into Thursday. Otherwise, uh, looks like a little bit of a warm up, then some cold again here towards the weekend.
This is so awesome. I just, I want to put in a request for a map for his office and a green screen. So that'll be in our. That's the next big purchase for those ARPA funds now. Okay. Al?
Um, no major updates. A lot of balls in the air. A lot.
Yeah.
Can I, can I?
Candidate forum on Thursday.
Yeah.
So good luck to all those who are participating.
And I, I was just going to mention, we are hosting the candidate forum here at City Hall in the council chambers. And I did, did just set up a live stream link on our YouTube channel. So if anyone is interested in live streaming it, they will be able to access it there, assuming all the technology works as expected. So.
All right. Thank you. And thank you for all the help to the chamber for our end of making that happen. We appreciate that. Did I miss anyone? Okay, I know how much you guys missed me when I was gone. I didn't hear it, but I just feel it in my heart that I was missed. Okay, so I want you to listen really carefully at this team building. It's not difficult, but I feel like the, um, the sentence is a little clunky. Okay, so what is the last place you went for the first time? It can be anything, like new grocery store, new gas station, whatever. The last place you went for the first time. And would you recommend it?
I'll go.
Okay, Linda?
My last place would be the Denny's that we had dinner with our family members two days ago. And yes, I would recommend it. It's in Queen Creek, Arizona.
Oh, and you have never been to that Denny's before? Is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
Okay, and what was the, what's the dish you ordered?
Oh, I got the salmon. And I had some really good iced tea while I was there, and the broccoli was cooked to crunchy perfection.
All right, you gotta love broccoli. Let's cook to perfection. Like, what more could you want? Except for your, your fish cooked fully.
It was good.
Anybody else want to go?
Yeah, I've got one.
Bill?
We had friends come into, actually extended family come into town who at one point had been Harley Davidson owners. And I went to the Harley Davidson Museum, or we went to the Harley Davidson Museum in Milwaukee for the first time. Uh, had heard about it before. And it was really wonderful, and I certainly would recommend it. Really, really well done, and we had a great time.
Thank you, Bill. Larry, you hit your hand up?
Yeah, I went recently, believe it or not, after living in Wisconsin all these years. I went to the Fishing Hall of Fame in Hayward, Wisconsin. And it was actually quite interesting. So something different. I recommend it to people. It's very fascinating, the history of fishing and lures and things like that, so.
So is that the one that has like the big musky out front?
Yes.
And did you take a selfie? I don't remember seeing a selfie.
Did not, no, you know, with, with my hands, it's always hard for me to take selfies. That's, that's a difficult job. But I was there.
You were there. You saw the fish. All right, good on you.
I'll go. Um, not too exciting, but I went to Yaddie's Bar and Grill for the first time a few weeks ago because Jamie heard that they had those huge soft pretzels and cheese. And we have been craving them ever since they left Quit Trip. So we went to enjoy that and it was very, very good.
All right, they do have that. I remember being there a few years back when somebody ordered that.
I'm going to live vicariously through my daughter. We took her to an art, art night. It was parents' night out at Matty Strong Studios on Parkview Drive on Friday night, and she had an amazing time. And you could tell by the amount of paint, marker, and other art supplies she had covered on her body from head to toe. So, um, she had a great time. Highly recommend it for anyone else who has kids or even adults, because it looks like they have adult classes and stuff, too.
Cool, very cool. That is such a great idea.
Um, Matty Strong Studios, Matty Strong Studios downtown on Parkview Drive.
Oh, I didn't know she did art. That's great.
I've got two.
Okay, Ryan?
Uh, Cadillac Ranch Cat Rescue. They have a really nice facility there. We're looking at getting a new cat. So neat place. And the other one, because that's a business I want to mention location is Copenhagen.
Copenhagen is the.
Isn't Copenhagen Denmark.
Okay.
Very neat city.
Cool, very cool. And you recommend both, what you say?
Yep.
Where, where is Cadillac Ranch? I don't think I know where they are.
Northwest of Janesville. Coast Lake, Janesville and Fulton.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, it's a cat rescue place.
Very cool.
I tried a new Mexican restaurant in Madison, my lunch on Monday, and it was very good.
What was the name of it? Do you remember?
Uh, Laredo's on the west side. They just put a couple cool little twists on what I would normally order elsewhere.
Oh, nice. Nice. It is Taco Tuesday. Like, I don't know why I'm not eating a taco right now.
Uh, I, I really haven't gone anywhere in three years, but because of the COVID, but the one thing I have done was go to a basketball game for my granddaughter for six and seven year old girls. My God. You know, to see them play and they've never played basketball before is hilarious. So I thought it was really cool to watch them that the first time they've learned to dribble or throw a basket and, yeah, it was cool. Yeah.
Thank you. And you would recommend that?
Yes, it's fun.
All righty.
I, mine's kind of a little unfair because I now have been there twice, but it's still very new. Like Teresa, we don't really go many places because of COVID and on top of that with small children, it's hard to, you know, venture out into the world. But Grant recently started taking an introductory class at Integrity Martial Arts, and he really, really, really likes it a lot. So we are very excited that he likes it and he's excited about it. And I think once the introductory class is done in two weeks, that he will probably carry on with it. So and start a regular class. So that's really exciting for, for him. He really likes it.
That's awesome. It's very awesome.
I can go. Um, over the weekend, we were in Green Bay and we tried a place called Cheese Steak Rebellion. It was cheese steaks and cheesecakes, and it was delicious, and it's Star Wars themed. They have an arcade in the back. It was fun.
Oh, my gosh, I have some people in my family that would love that. Thank you for the recommendation.
Well, I think I've been there a couple of weeks myself now, but the last first place I went to was my new office at West Side Psychotherapy on the east side of Madison as I start my clinical hours. So I already have two clients and they both came back, so that's always a good.
Uh, and do you, do you recommend yourself?
I, yes, but not to you all, because I know you two, so you'll have to go see somebody else.
Right, right.
Well, if you had a gun and told me to come back, I'd come back too.
Steve, I just got a warning. Some of mine have to come back.
Yeah, I, I expect that will happen eventually. And, and Teresa, I don't tell anybody what I'm doing for my other job. If they find out, we'll have the conversation, but I'm not throwing it out.
Okay.
Scott has had a client in me for about five years, so.
He's had a lot of practice, right? With all of us, probably.
And, and believe me, I'm a mess.
So you're on the long term plan? Is that what you're saying?
Wait till he sees the bill.
Yeah. There you go.
Well, funny enough, there was, it was a couple of months ago, like I hadn't stopped over in a couple of weeks, and he was like, where, where are you?
The time here, the clock's ticking, you know?
Yeah, yeah. It's not because I was cured.
It's a lifelong process, right, for us all? Oh, boy. Okay, I'll go. Um, I went to some place that I have wanted to go for twenty years, for twenty years. I actually had wanted to move there. And I was vetoed by, I think, a ten year old, my middle child. So Saint John in the Virgin Islands. And I had never been there before, and we so we, um, we came aboard in Saint Thomas, and we took a taxi to the ferry to take another taxi to the beach. And, um, very narrow, very, very hilly roads everywhere we went, but we were able to do some, we did some snorkeling on the beach. And we saw, we got to see sea turtles and dolphins and stingrays and, um, zebrafish, tuna. It was really, really, really fun, just amazing. So I highly, highly recommend it. It was worth everything. It was worth, worth all of the forms of transportation. We took, you know, a plane, a boat, a taxi, a ferry. And a lot of walking, but so it was great.
Nice way to relax.
Yes, and I did think of you. Like, I just want you to know, there was a point where it was February first, and I'm like, huh? I miss my council, just a little. And then I just, you know, had a drink.
Yeah. Blew us off.
Totally blew you off. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, Mark and Mark.
The two marks that candidates.
I'll go. I'll go. The la, the last first visit I had, I.
I'll go. The la, the last first, uh, visit I had, I was in, that was probably way back in August in Milwaukee, and went on the, uh, River Walk from down in the Third Ward area up to the downtown up by the, uh, uh, Performing Arts Center. So that's a great, uh, great walk to go on. It's all along the river. It's built up. It's, it's fantastic during the summertime. It's just, we went, I, that was, I first walked it on a Thursday night. It's like a party every night, so. I'd advise it. There, there are one, there are one or two microbreweries in Milwaukee, I think, so.
We did that exact same thing. I think it was in, I think it was in late August or early September. We walked from the Third Ward up to the Pfizer Center. Yeah, it's, it is phenomenal.
They, I, I just want to shout out to Milwaukee, because they really did a great job rehabilitating that river area. I went on a, a boat tour of the, down the river in Hotel Lake Michigan. And, um, yeah, they did, they did a great job. So, Eric?
I was just, I was going to keep my mouth shut, because I figured I don't get to vote, so I didn't know that you wanted me to add to this, so.
Oh, absolutely.
But you called me out when you said candidate. So, uh, on Saturday, my wife had a, a competition. At CrossFit Bark River in Della Field. Uh, she, she has a, a coach that she goes and does competitions with. So I got to go cheer her on and, uh, go to Della Field. I don't know when the last time I was in Della Field. I certainly have not been at this gym before, but it was a great gym. I heard it was actually one of the Hendrix properties that Diane owns. But it's a really neat little downtown with a lot of new buildings that look like old buildings, sort of what they did in Stoughton. So really great area. She actually got third place with her teammate, so it was well worth the trip. And I didn't have to work out. I was just sipping coffee and water, so, a great experience.
And you would recommend it?
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, awesome. Who we got last? Mark, Mark and Annette? Am I missing anybody?
I'll go. So we, uh, took the kids up to the Great Wolf this weekend, and then I'd never been there, but we went to Monks for dinner, and it was good.
Oh, that is good.
So, so you had, have been to Monks or the Great Wolf?
Monks.
Monks. Yeah, it's not too bad. It's not too bad.
That, that didn't sound like a glowing recommendation, though, Mark.
It was good.
It was good.
Wasn't like stellar, but it was good. I'd go back.
Go back.
So I have been taking advantage of retirement, and I've been to two places in the last month that I've never been before. I went to Puerto Morales, Mexico, and then I went to Puerto Vallarta, Mexico. And I would recommend both of them in the winter in Wisconsin. It definitely was worth just, I felt much like a reptile, just like trying to get in as much heat as I could before I came back. And I'd like to say, Eric, I drank water and coffee, but that is not what I drank.
For you. Good for you.
Okay, I want to say, like, I did drink a lot of water. Just want to throw that out there. And I drank a lot of coffee. And there's some fizzy, some fizziness in there in between. Alright, did we get everybody? Get everybody? Alright, good job, you guys. Good job. Um, some of you, we will see this week yet at the candidate forum. Uh, some of you, we won't see till March first, six PM, unless there's some weird last-minute meeting that comes up. Um, I think I got that right, all the dates right?
And, and my apologies to the candidates. I've got a conflict the night of the forum. It's not that I don't want to hear what you have to say. I'll watch the, a, uh, the YouTube version.
Alright. Well, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Alright.
Does anyone oppose to adjourning? I know you missed us all, and we're not together. Alright, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Good job. Less than an hour.
Thank you.
Take care, stay safe.
Have a nice evening.
Night.